Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford Council. Looks like we have a full house, which is a wonderful thing. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you if you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Shannon.
The mayor and all other persons are present.
Thank you. We have before us a unanimous consent agenda. Move for approval. Move for approval, President Resniak, seconded by Alder Person Turchi.
Motion by Alder Person Resniak, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, approving the following items on the unanimous consent agenda, the common council minutes of January 16th, 2024, and authorizing the purchase of three pad-mounted transformers from Resco at a cost not to exceed $59,490.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing not all those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Thank you. Communication, Shannon.
We received this past week a retirement notice of municipal court prosecuting attorney Tim Algiers. And I'm also going to be reading the City of Hartford Community Visioning Session informational notice that was sent out. You're cordially invited by the City of Hartford Community Visioning Session. Where are we going? How do we get here? Can I participate in planning for our future? The City of Hartford, the Hartford Area Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Business Improvement District, and the Hartford Area Development Corporation are inviting residents and non-resident property owners to provide valuable input that will help determine the community's priorities moving forward. This important visioning session will be held Wednesday, February 21st, from 6:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. at the Shower Arts Center in the upper-level Pike's Peak Room. Participants will learn how the community has changed over the past 20 years by viewing a fact-filled presentation on Hartford's demographics. Participants will then identify strengths and limitations of current development and community infrastructure, then concluding the session with participants sharing their ideal vision of Hartford's future. It is important to hear from all parts of our community during this process. Please know we have been very intentional in developing the list of individuals and organizations invited to participate. Our wish is to have 50 to 70 participants to assist us with real-time participant numbers. Please register in advance for the session at the link below, https://form.jotform.com/240104870397153, or you may contact the Hartford Area Chamber of Commerce at 262-673-7002 for assistance. Thank you for investing some of your valuable time in helping Hartford chart a course into the future. That's all.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Appearances and citizen comments. We do have two items this evening. The first is the introduction of Police Officer Sean Schmidt by Chief of Police McFarlane, along with the administration of the oath of office by our city clerk, Shannon Crowell.
Good evening. In the interest of time, I'm going to introduce both officers and then have them both sworn by our city clerk at the same time. We'll start off with Officer Jeff Radke, who was raised in Hartford since he was two years old. He graduated from Hartford Union High School in 2014, and then from Waukesha County Technical College in 2019 with a degree in criminal justice. He is currently working on his bachelor's degree in criminology from Southern New Hampshire University. Upon hiring Jeff, we enrolled him in the Recruit Academy at Fox Valley Technical College, and he is the first recruit to have been sent to Fox Valley. They have a summer recruit academy, which fits our needs quite well. He's also a former staff member of the Hartford Park and Rec. So this is his second job with the city. When not on duty, he enjoys being active, golfing, traveling, whether domestically or internationally, attending sporting events and concerts, and spending time with family and friends. He has also coached for Hartford Union Soccer Club since 2014. I would also like to welcome Officer Sean Schmidt. Originally from Illinois, Officer Sean Schmidt came to Wisconsin to further his education at Carroll University, as well as playing football here. He earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice while attending Carroll. He completed law enforcement recruit academy at WCTC in 2022, and then following academy, he secured a job as a deputy for Waukesha Sheriff's Department. While working for the sheriff's office, he applied for a patrol officer position here at the Hartford Police Department, seeking a better schedule that was conducive to work-life balance. He also sought to work in a municipality that was similar to his own hometown size. When not on duty, Sean enjoys working out and grilling with friends and family. So I would ask that you please welcome both Officer Sean Schmidt and Officer Jeff Radke, as they are sworn in by our city clerk.
Mr. Reigman. Aye. It's your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply.
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances.
Charter, laws, and ordinances.
Of the City of Hartford.
Of the City of Hartford.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Of the Hartford Police Department.
Of the Hartford Police Department.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
The officers will receive their badges.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So you want to go to CHS?
Which one of my kids did you go?
Oh.
Yeah.
You went.
Got time for lunch.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. At this time, we do offer for people of the City of Hartford, citizens' comments. This is not part of the public hearing, so if you're looking to speak at the public hearing, that's a couple items down, so please do not address the public hearing. But if there's anybody else who would like to address the city council, a citizen of Hartford who happens to be city, please come up. Thank you. Please just come right up to the podium. Your name and address, please, and you get three glorious minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening. You pull the microphone up, please. That'd be great.
How's that?
Super. Thank you very much.
Better?
Yes.
My name is Rich Zoladkiewicz. I live at 331 Novak Street here in Hartford, and my address is part of Hartford Square Two condominium complex. We're right behind Festival Foods, yeah, but 170 tax-paying households. Now, I had already sent out a letter of merit to the city back in August, and I emailed all of you the letter a couple days ago, I think it was. Now, the thing is, is that although we have 170 taxpayers, we are discriminated against for trash collection because we have condos living four to a building. You know, it's not a commercial building. It's not a rental. The people in those four units wheel out their carts every week, just like everybody else. They pay the same amount of tax as the duplexes, but the city does not pay for theirs. So being a condo association, other taxpayers have to pick up that charge. And the charges for 2024 are going to be about $14,600. They pay the same tax that I pay in a duplex, but the city won't pick up their trash. Doesn't sound equitable, and I would like to get on the agenda to bring up more details because we'd like to see that ordinance changed because it's discrimination against condo owners. So, that's it. So if you can give me some direction on how to get on the agenda for the next meeting, I'd really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
My cohort has worked on this. Please give her just a minute or two.
Hello, Ms. Cohort. If you could please just give us your name and address.
I'm Geraldine Kronz. I live at 326 Novak Street, across the street from Rich, in Hartford, Wisconsin, and I am one of those that live in the four-family condos. And I pay my taxes to you guys every year, and I have one bag of garbage every week, and seldom have a little bit more than that. But so a description of our condos is we are residential, two-unit and four-unit. Eighty percent of our owners are 55 and older. Occupancy is limited to four people per condo unit. Therefore, we are living in a medium-density residential area, and we do not create a high-density residential community. We do not own our own streets. The city plows our streets. Each unit is single-family ownership. Me and my three roofmates have paid, in 2022, we paid $11,807.38 for our one building of real estate taxes. Compared to, we were told this because we look like a four-unit rental, and four-unit rentals get billed for their garbage collection. A four-unit rental pays $6,893 in Hartford for real estate taxes. They have renters where they can recoup their real estate. We don't. So we pay our $11,807, and it comes out of our pocket. We don't get any money back for our condo association. It's unfair and unjust that it's a common bill that we get from waste management. So our bill for waste management, again, is $14,000 a year. Now, two units have to pay part of that as well.
We share. We share the annual cost divided up 170 ways. So even though the city's paying for mine, I have to pay in for the ones that you're not paying for.
Got 30 seconds, just so you're aware. So if you wanted to wrap it up, that'd be great.
And every year, it goes up. 2021, it was $859.59 a month. 2023, $1,121.74 a month. 2024, $1,220.20 a month. So it keeps going up. We have no way to recoup the money. Most of us are on social security, and we want to stay in our homes, please. So we're asking, please, to be put on the agenda to help us.
You bet. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Anyone else wishing to address the Council for citizens' appearance? Third call. And again, you will have a chance during the public hearing about the public hearing item. With that, we'll go to the next item, the Mayor's Report. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of something that happens in our community absolutely every year. That's our St. Patrick's Day Dinner. This year, Sunday, March 10th. This is put on by the Hartford Lions. Please know, of course, that the Hartford Lions, if you look around and see all the things that are done in our wonderful community, many of them through the many years that they've been here have been funded by the Hartford Lions, different parks, different Eagle Scout projects, many different things. They're a wonderful organization, and one of their biggest fundraisers is the St. Patrick's Day Dinner. It is held at the Chandelier Ballroom this year, which is, of course, our historic Chandelier Ballroom, which we are very proud of. Again, it's Sunday, March 10th. It starts at 11:00 a.m. It goes to 5:00 p.m. Tickets at the door, $25, and if anybody wants a $22 ticket, I just happen to have a few, just so you know. So I can help you out there, as just about any lion in the city. We are selling tickets now, and you can save $3 off of every ticket. So, again, a worthy item that we do to support our community. So thank you very much for that. Going on now to Aldermanic requests. President Resniak.
Well, as long as you're promoting events, I was at the Business Improvement District meeting last week.
Okay.
And Ice Town Main is coming up a week from Saturday.
This is sponsored by the mill.
It's sponsored by the bid. It's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. So anybody who wants to partake of ice sculpturing, it'll be a week from Saturday. Beautiful downtown Hartford.
Thank you very much. Alder Person Carroll.
Nothing to nightmare.
Alder Person Reagan.
Yeah, yes, Mayor. I have an update I'd like to share. I attended the Mid-Marine Municipal Association Dinner Meeting on Wednesday, January 24th in Port Washington with Dennis Hagie. I shared a few highlights of the city, most notably the super job done by the city workers clearing the snow after the big snowstorm we had, the new restaurant choices the city will have in the likes of the Qdoba and the Jersey Mikes, and finally, the addition of the tractor supply on the city's west side. The Association currently is particularly concerned with two issues. The first is Senate Bill 691, which is proposing an expansion of a town's authority. This bill is attempting to reverse longstanding laws and structure of orderly development and diminishes the authority of cities and villages in handling such matters. So the Association has taken steps to oppose this proposal. As the City of Hartford, we should probably take any chance we can get to oppose this as well. The other issue is the sharing of the county sales tax with local municipalities. County residents spoke loud and clear in favor of this in a referendum last year. However, county leadership hasn't done anything with it. Communications are still being attempted by the Association with the county, but has not yet gotten much of a response.
Thank you. And just as an aside, Dennis Hagie, who I know is in the audience, was kind enough right after the meeting to give me a call and give me an update personally as well. So Dennis, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Alder Person Garza.
Just one item. I'd just like to welcome Officer Radke and Schmidt to Hartford PD, and look forward to seeing you do some good stuff out there for us.
As long as they leave your car alone.
As long, yeah. Leave us alone.
Chiumer humor. Alder Person Turchi.
Nothing to nightmare.
Alder Person Webb.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I've said this before, but I think it's worth reiterating. Regardless of what your position is, I think it's great when we see a lot of people at these meetings. You know, there's not always things on the agenda that you care about, like buying pad transformers and things that are sort of routine city business. But it's great to see people at the meeting, regardless of what your opinion is. This is how a city government is supposed to work, and thank you for coming to express those.
Thank you. Alder Person Coler.
Yeah, I just wanted also just to welcome the two new officers, part of the Hartford family, and anxious to have them on board with us. So, thank you.
Alder Person Savage.
Just want to say welcome to our officers and thank you.
Alder Person Fall.
Welcome, officers. And Alder Person Webb, my butt, transformer pants. Just letting you know that.
There we go. Okay, at this time, we will have, open up our public hearing. Shannon, I will let you read the resolution.
Please take notice that a public hearing of the City of Hartford will be held at 7:00 p.m. or thereafter on February 13th, 2024, in the Common Council chambers on the lower level of City Hall, 109 North Main Street, by the Common Council of the City of Hartford to consider the following: a jurisdictional transfer agreement between the City of Hartford and the Town of Hartford, transferring public right-of-way a portion of North Main Street, including provisions attaching road right-of-way to the City of Hartford pursuant to Section 66.0301, subsection 6, Wisconsin statutes. The right-of-way transfer includes approximately 2,115 lineal feet, .4 miles from the north city limit to the north limit of the Newville Farm parcel, to allow for the planning and construction of future improvements to North Main Street by the City of Hartford. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear those persons who wish to express their opinions for or against the proposed jurisdictional transfer agreement with the Town of Hartford to accept jurisdiction of the right-of-way described above. A copy of the proposed jurisdictional transfer agreement can be viewed at the Planning and Zoning Department, 109 North Main Street, Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., or at Hartford Downtown Hall, 3360 County Highway K, Monday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and Wednesday from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. This was published in the Daily News on January 16th, 2024.
Thank you very much. I'll do my gavel thing to officially open the hearing. Thank you for that reading. We'll now go to explanation of hearing by staff. John, you're taking that?
I will take this evening. Thank you. Just real quickly here, there are two main issues that brought us here tonight. One is we have a resident from the town who specifically approached us and made it clear that she did not want to be attached to the city if we take the right-of-way. And that's why we're here tonight with an agreement, and we've worked out, I think, the issues related to that so that no one gets attached, and just the right-of-way. This is about the right-of-way and the utilities and the alternatives for how that road gets widened going north out of town. The other issue is that because of the significant costs that will be involved in any improvements out there, if we go through this agreement with the Town of Hartford, we will have an opportunity then to be able to tap potentially WISDOT funds to help leverage those projects, the road construction, and some of the utility work. So with that, we are, we're here tonight to try and get to an agreement on this right-of-way piece from the current north line heading toward Neville Farm.
Thank you very much. And just for our audience to make sure, WISDOT funds is the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, so we're talking about using state funds to help augment the payment of the cost as we move forward, correct?
Correct. And without an agreement, we could not use the state funds.
So we have to have an agreement in order to get state funds. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to do appearances for, I will, after speaking with the city attorney and our city administrator, please know that this is, what we have decided to do is open this up to people other than citizens of the City of Hartford, because we're the city council of Hartford. And what we want to do is make sure that everybody, including our neighbors, get a chance to do, to be able to get their three glorious minutes. What I would ask, for time's sake, if somebody comes up and says exactly what you're going to say, please, I mean, if you want to come up and you want to be recognized in that, and you can just do something like along the line of what she said or what he said, unless you have something new and innovative in order to answer. But please, if you would, just do not repeat again and again and again the same points. Not that anybody would, but I would like, again, for the ability to be able to move this right along. We want to give everybody a chance. If you want to, I don't know if it was a joke or not, but you're welcome, because the people that are voting are on the dais here, and if you want to, if somebody's making a point and you want to agree with them, and maybe you're a little shy and you don't necessarily want to get up, you could do the jazz hands, as far as being able to let all of us know here and the people here that who are voting, that that's definitely a point that resonates with you. So again, we're going to be as quick as possible. We will give everybody their three minutes, if you'd like. So, at first, as we do go in order, the appearances for, people wishing to appear for this resolution to enter into this jurisdictional transfer agreement with the Town of Hartford. Is there anybody wishing to speak for? Anybody wishing to speak for? I have to ask three times. Anybody wishing to speak for? Okay, well, that was quick. I'm sure the same will happen here with the appearances against. Anybody wishing to appear against? What you would do is please come up, state your name, your full address, and then three glorious minutes. Hello!
Hi, everybody. How are you and I?
How are you?
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Carrie Josten and live at 4160 North Main Street. I don't know if you have the picture in front of you of what they're talking about, but my house is the one that's in the very middle of all of that.
Yes, it is.
So if you don't know where that is, it's kind of, I'm very, very much in the middle of this whole thing. I was told many years ago, when this whole thing started, that appearances at these meetings was how you got to hear me, and I got to hear from you. And over those meetings, and I've been to every single one, because it does affect me so much, I had some simple requests that I had asked. I said I did not want to get annexed into the city for any purpose. I moved to the town for a reason.
Yep.
I said I did, I asked that the city water and the city sewer and all that did not go in front of my property, because I also asked that I didn't want to be an island. That's everything that's happening tonight. So all the assurances that I was given for the last five to six years that these things weren't going to be happening is now on the agenda. And so here I am, again, saying, these are things I really didn't want to see. John and I have talked, and he's given me some assurances again. But the problem is, the insurances that I've already gotten, I'm not seeing the integrity behind it because we're still doing the same thing and moving forward. So yes, it affects me tremendously. I am the one he was talking about when he said that there was some issues, because I am going to be completely surrounded by you if you go through with this and make that row in front of my house where we are now an island. And I understand that this is what this is for, basically. It's basically to have the integrative agreement so that we can make me an island. So I just wanted to let you know that I have been in contact with all of you. I have been in contact with all of, to all of the meetings. I've been in contact with John and Steve, and I was in contact with Justin and with Jacob. And I have been for the last five years, and they probably get sick of hearing from me, because I'm in the office, or I call them, or I email them, because I need to know what's going on. Because like I said, out of everybody that's going to be impacted, I am 100% impacted by this. Okay? So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing? Thank you. You have the right idea. Thank you. That's great. Just state your name and address.
Yes, Kevin Christensen, 6881 Pheasant Run Road. Since I'm being limited to three minutes, I'm going to have to just hit the high points here.
Thank you.
But I wanted to share some of my experience with this public hearing and documents review. January 16th, the notice was published in the paper. The city clerk read it. What she did not include is that the letter stated that it was issued October 16th, 2024, so it can be kind of confusing.
I am the one he was talking about when he said that there was some issues because I am going to be completely surrounded by you if you go through with this and make that row in front of my house where we are now an island. And I understand that this is what this is for, basically. It's basically to have the integrative agreement so that we can make me an island. So I just wanted to let you know that I have been in contact with all of you. I have been in contact with all of, to all the meetings. I've been in contact with John and Steve and I was in contact with Justin and with Jacob. And I have been for the last five years and they probably get sick of hearing from me because I'm in the office or I call them or I email them because I need to know what's going on. Because like I said, out of everybody that's going to be impacted, I am 100% impacted by this. Okay? So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing? Thank you. You have the right idea. Thank you. That's, that's great. Just state your name and address.
Yes, Kevin Christensen, 6881 Pheasant Run Road. Since I'm being limited to three minutes, I'm going to have to just hit the high points here.
Thank you.
But I wanted to share some of my experience with this public hearing and documents review. January 16th, the notice was published in the paper. The city clerk read it. What she did not include is that the letter stated that it was issued October 16th, 2024, so it can be kind of confusing. The, the public notice document said that the documents were available at the Town Hall. I took off work Wednesday. January 17th went there. They did not have the documents, so effectively it was a waste of my time. Wednesday, the 31st, I took off work again. I went and received documents from the town, reviewed them, stopped by the city to review their copy, and it was different than the one that the town had. So I left a message with the city office, asking them to clarify that. Again, reminding you, this was Wednesday. I called, had to call again Friday afternoon to ask for the information. Monday, I did receive a call. That would have been February 6th. The city clerk said that the city engineer would have to answer my question and he did, he wasn't around that day. The next day, he called and said that there had been several copies of this document in, in various stages of edit, but that that afternoon, they, they should have a final copy. So my whole issue is when, when you guys publish that the documents are available and they aren't there, that, that doesn't lead to a whole lot of confidence. And it just, that there's numerous versions floating around and the two documents that were produced were not the same, again, just doesn't lead to a whole lot of confidence that you folks have been working together with the affected municipalities. So the one last item I have is item number seven on the version I believe that is the most current. It talks about no, no cost for the water and sewer mains to any folks that remain in the town. I would just suggest that that get expanded to include all utilities, including natural gas, electric, and communications. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stevie?
We can't comment on that.
I know we can't. Oh, okay. Okay. Hello, ma'am. Thank you very much for coming. Just state your name and address and three glorious.
My name's Karen Rigo. I live at 6899 Pheasant Run Road. I live right on the corner of North Main and Pheasant Run. My property is going to be affected tremendously even though this property does not, is not adjacent to mine. The hill is right, that is planned to be taken down, is right on kind of part of my property. Sidewalks are part of my property that you eventually are going to put in. Any roadwork done at the corner of my property and Pheasant Run, North Main and Pheasant Run, is also affecting me and my property. I bought this home with my late husband 34 years ago when it was a half mile from the city limits. I love living in the Town of Hartford. I always have. I tell you this because I want you to know a little bit of who I am. Because if you know a little bit about me, maybe you'll hear what I'm about to say. I know the city needs to grow. I know it's your job as the city council members to help make that happen. I get it. While I don't like the rate at which you obtain that goal nor the manner in which you conduct yourselves while obtaining that goal, I still understand that's your goal. I have a few other things I want to say today. First, I'm surprised and appalled at the lack of professionalism the city has shown in with regards to the administrative side of making this meeting happen. Your team was unable to get the agenda correct the first time this meeting was scheduled. Then your team was unable to get the certified letter to property owners correct the second time around. Things as small as the date were incorrect. And how is it that the transfer agreement could be different depending on where you viewed it, Town Hall or City Hall? Because it was different. Makes no sense. And why wasn't the Town Hall in possession of that transfer agreement when the letter came to me? I shouldn't have had to go to City Hall a few times to figure out when you actually had it to them. Another thing that I would like to say, and this has gone on for decades already, with Borland Farms initially, because I've been there forever, remember, 34 years in my home. I've been at many of these meetings. Stop treating us like secondhand citizens, like we don't matter as much as city residents. I've heard too many times the derogatory remarks about town residents who are just asserting their rights. Stop telling us that we should have moved further out of town if we didn't want this to happen. Stop threatening us with taking easements to get what you want. Stop trying to make us feel better by saying our property values would go up if we were in the city. It doesn't make us feel better. My neighbors and I all know we have something that's far better than high property values. Maybe consider having some empathy for what we're dealing with, how our worlds have been and are being turned upside down and how our properties have changed from being the quiet, peaceful peace of heaven we have loved for years. You changed that. You did that. Own it and think of how you would feel something sim, if something similar was happening to your property and your home. And lastly, I really wish that we as town residents had the ability to vote for Hartford City Council and Mayor. Because frankly, since you are continually making decisions for us, it seems only right that we should have the ability to say who sits up there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the responses there. Appreciate that. Thank you for coming, ma'am. Just your name and your address?
My name is, my name is Karen Galani. I live at 6852 Pheasant Run Road. I will be one of the north properties impacted by that proposal. I'm pretty much right under the N. I know that's already a done deal. You've taken that land. What I don't understand to what she said, what he said, is the way it's been brought it out. It just seems very under the covers. And I have a question. Sorry, I had a really bad day and I don't want to pick on anybody, but if you scroll through that document, you get to the bottom, you can't even read it. Do we need a new scanner in the city? Because it goes like this on the page. That's my OCD. I'm sorry. But I tried to read this before the meeting and it got harder and harder because the documents aren't even scanned. My question on that document is, there's a statement in there that in the details of the public hearing and the agreement, that this would be effective March 1st. It's February 16th. My understanding there also had to be a public hearing with the Town of Hartford. We're, do the math, Karen, 16 days from March 1st. How does that happen? Aren't there laws that say there has to be the public hearing in the city and in the town? That's my point. I just feel like, like Karen, I moved to my house 22 years ago. First thing that happened when I moved in is you annexed Borland Farms. And you at that time tried to annex Pheasant Run. And I was very verbal then, saying if I wanted to live in the city, I would have bought in the city. And to Karen's point, you guys just keep coming after us. Yes, cities have to grow, but go a different direction, please. We're tired. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know if you can give your own jazz hands, but that was funny.
It's my energy.
Oh, that's good. Please just state your name and address.
All right. My name is Laurel Yakey, 3908 Ernst Drive, Town of Hartford. I am calling because I was part of the meeting back in November 2019 with this, this development was proposed to come into the City of Hartford. We are now looking four and a half years after it was annexed to the city. I also live where the city had annexed property back in February of 2020. That's farm property that's behind my house, next to the Washington County Golf Course. Again, property was annexed into the city because the developer wanted to know that he could get sewer and services, sewer and service. Regardless, he walked away from the property. We now have the family still owning the property, but it is in the City of Hartford. What I am here to state tonight is that I understand when John had met with us back in November when the public hearing was not properly notified or, you know, noticed, that they were trying to take care of the development ahead of having a developer come in. Now, it's all great to get ready for something to come in, but we have not had a large development in the City of Hartford for countless years. I think the largest one has been Borland Farms, perhaps maybe down on Wilson Avenue, too. But regardless, we're trying to push something through. And by the mistakes that Kevin has mentioned and other people, I sat here in the November meeting with the Public City Works and John was gracious enough to let people speak on behalf of it because they had come here prepared to speak. But again, it was questioned to the city employees, Volker, Griffin, if the town had approved that resolution. I sat in the front row where I'm sitting right now, shaking my head. I'm with the town as a planning commission member. We had not seen the resolution, but yet your city employees presented it to the Public Works Committee as if it was a final deal. It was not a final deal. Yes, we are going to be holding a public hearing in the town for this resolution, but I don't believe we're at the final stage yet. So yes, stating that March 1st is the effective date is not accurate. And I think that is what we are resondingly saying is that we need to work together as municipalities. Yes, we didn't plan on being part of the city, nor was I when I moved in here 23 years ago. But here I am again. I've got the city encroaching on two of my property lines. I'm going to be in that same position when we find a developer, but the last time I heard the developer speak when they were looking at the Washington County Golf Course development, they're going to make $500 per lot. I don't know about you, but I think there's a lot of infrastructure cost to building homes today at the values that they are valued at, that we are not going to have a developer jump on this Neville project because there's a roadway there. And I think we need to do our due diligence and do it respectfully, diligently, and paying attention to the details and to sit up trying to shove something down because that's why you see the number of people attending this meeting tonight as you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sir, if you please, just state your name and your address.
My name is Dennis Johnson. I live at 4110 North Main Street. My property is right on Main Street, both northwest corner. My main objection to this is the transfer of the road so they can get utilities and sewer, but through that area. But I'm going to have a great impact on my property when the front yard is partially removed, if the road is improved to meet the other south end of the Main Street. We know what I'm looking at there. So basically against this proposition, against this, this new development, it's going to take a lot of additional time and labor, going to be a lot of money involved in this. We're still not sure where the funding is coming from all of that. But primarily, it's going to be a great change to our properties, as Karen has mentioned, and also for the, just the amount of traffic that's going to be increased in this area. So that's my main thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Just state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name's Dave Eli and my address, I'll put down for my mother, 4177 North Main Street. And we own everything east of your whole subdivision there. And all I want to say tonight is that I've been here before. When I've been here, we're talking 75 years at our property. When, when I was a boy, we farmed everything and back there. At 30 some acres, 36 acres, farmed it all, most all. And after you put in the Rosman subdivision, that backed the water up. There's a creek going through, you back that up. So it took away half our land. Then you put in the Borland subdivision and that wasn't supposed to affect anything. Pretty much took care of the rest of our land. You put a culvert under the road just down from Carrie's place, which drains all your fields now into our place. You have turned our place into a marsh, basically. I cannot get in there to do any field work as far as if I wanted to grow a crop. And I guess all I can say is I want you aware of what you've done. The, I got someone from the county over to look at our land and I explained, you know, showed them what had all happened. He says, you've got a legitimate complaint here. He said, I think you, you know, you could pursue this. How deep are your pockets? They're not that deep. So I'm just asking, I guess, I'm really concerned now for, you know, your next phase here of, for the first time, excuse me, for the first time, go back a year ago, we had water in my mother's basement. 60 days I went over there and we took out up to 100 gallons a day out of her basement because this is all backing up. Anyhow, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call? You were the best waiver, by the way.
Oh, thanks. Good evening. I'm John Matty. I live at 4203 North Main Street. I have in total agreement with Mr. Eli. I live right on the corner of where the new development's going to be. And there's a culvert that runs right on my property line with another, with my neighbor. And there's always water running through there. And it seems that it's more and more every year. So I don't know what kind of impact that's going to have on my property because it's actually lower elevation than Mr. Eli's property. So I'm very concerned about what's going to happen with the environmental aspects of this whole thing. And I did, and actually, I've lived there all my life and we built the house in 1952. And I don't think that it was anywhere near as, as much of a, what would you say, a marshland in my backyard because half of my yard now is unusable because it's all marsh bogs and everything. So it's just sitting there. And it used to be a nice big garden, many, well, not many, about 20 years ago. My mother used to plant fruit and vegetables in the backyard all the time. And that's, it's just like impossible to do that nowadays. So yeah, I'm in agreement with a lot of people here. I live, I, we lived in the country for many, many years. And now when this all gets developed, I'll open my front window and there's going to be houses. So I don't know if any of you live out in the country, probably not, but it's totally different than having somebody right next door to your house looking in your windows and such. You know, it's like, maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but I'm not used to living in the city. So I'll probably have to get used to it or move. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last call. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll have discussion by council. President Resnahan.
Question, Steve, I'm a little confused about the timeframe on these hearings. Did the Town of Hartford not have a public hearing on this?
Not yet.
They haven't. Because I was at the Public Works meeting about a month ago and all of this crowd was, pretty much this crowd was here and I thought this was a done deal that, not a done deal, but I thought the next step would be a public hearing by the Town of Hartford. And it never happened. Is there a reason why it didn't happen? Anybody know?
Go ahead.
I do.
No, 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 no. We're keeping this.
Steve?
This is not an open discussion with the audience. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I mean, the, one of the, I think the issues that I think a lot of people are, are facing is this has been a very fluid agreement. Again, keep in mind that the city's not taking this right-of-way. This is an agreement between the town and the city. The town and the city have both been inundated with thoughts, recommendations, ideas of changes. And so their attorney, our attorney, their village, I'm sorry, town board president, myself, have been going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, trying to to add things or change things to address some of the issues that have been brought forward. So one of the, this is very uncommon for a intergovernmental agreement to constantly be changing it because of the interests of the individual, each individual. But again, I, the township, and again, John can correct me if I'm wrong, but the town has been, and their attorney, our attorney, ourselves have been very animate about, again, trying to address as many issues as legally we can. There are some things that, you know, aren't in the agreement because they're law, so, you know, we can't do something because it's law. So again, it's, the answer to the question is, is that the town does have it, and in my communication with Ryan Lippard is the fact that they do have it planned. I reached out to him on Friday. I said, "Ryan, are you ready to go? Are we ready to go? Have we, have we gone through all the changes that you want and you think that your residents want?" And he says, "I believe it's as best as we're going to be able to get it." And so thus the reason it came before you tonight.
All right. That helps clarify a few things. One other thing, at the Public Works meeting last month, most of the residents in Pheasant Run subdivision that were here were under the assumption that they're going to get annexed to the city. And we can assure all of you folks, that's not going to happen. If this right-of-way goes through and the utilities go through, we're going right past your driveway entrance, but we're not coming into Pheasant Run. We cannot legally annex any of you, so you'd have to all show up at this meeting and request annexation before we could even consider it.
Guessing that won't happen.
Well, I'm guessing that won't happen either.
Yeah, the key point to that is, if, if there was going to be an annexation, it would have already happened.
Sure.
When we attached that property, it would have already happened.
Right. We've already attached that property, what, two years ago?
Yeah, I think it's correct, two years ago.
Well, that's the interesting thing. You go back four years, it's 2024, you're talking 2019, 2020. There was this little thing called COVID-19 that, that caused a lot of businesses to go out of business, that caused developers to go out of business, and that pretty much shut down development across the entire country, much less little old Hartford. So we have to make allowances for the fact that, yes, there has been some slowdowns, and yes, there were things that were annexed, but the world stopped in 2020. So just to please keep that in mind. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, please. Alder Person Webb.
So just, just, I'm going to have to do this like lawyerly thing, but there was a couple of comments made about the March 1st date in the, I think it's paragraph nine. But I read that, and it says, "March 1st or when the agreement is approved." Am I reading that correctly to mean like, all of these, like the plan, like whatever the town needs to do has to happen before this would actually be approved? So that March 1 date is subject to other actions? Is that fair?
Absolutely.
And Wisconsin DOT approval of the agreement, which may be this year, might be next.
Okay, so.
Correct.
Okay. And just so we're clear, this resolution, as I read it, does not annex anybody. It is solely for right-of-way of the road. Also, there was a comment made about, I think the first lady who spoke talked about like water sewer running by her property. Can you explain like where that actually will go?
So the, yeah, so the utilities go through right-of-way. There is an existing right-of-way there. It's currently owned by the town. The town is willing and wants to swap that with us. So the right-of-way has always been there. That's exactly where the utilities will go. The right-of-way, of course, includes partial, mostly the road, right, and then the shoulder. Now, sometimes some people have, the shoulder of the road is a ditch. Sometimes they have curb and gutter. But nonetheless, it's not necessarily your property all the way to the center of the line of the road. There's, there's a town right-of-way. And the town owns it right now, and they are wanting to transfer it to us.
I, I think the point I'm trying to make is, that right-of-way could be used by the town right now to put in anything they want, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, Alder Person Churchie.
There was some comments about we annexed property. We don't annex property.
We approve annexations.
Property owners request annexation. So I want to make that clear.
Alder Person Phillip.
Yeah, I just want to react to one of the comments about the township's residents' vote on this transfer agreement. My understanding is, because I was in that meeting a couple of, I don't know, a few weeks ago.
You got to bring up your microphone. You're dropping it. Boy, there.
Yeah, I was in that meeting and, and heard the voice there, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but this approval needs to go through two steps, right? We, we need to approve to say we want to go into the three, but we, we need to approve it, and we have a voice in what we have for our interest in the city and what we want to do, live in the vision of the city. And then the townspeople have their vote at their town meeting as well. And if they vote no, then this agreement stops. Am I right on that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you said there was three when you raised your hand.
The Department of, Department of Transportation has to agree to the transfer.
And what are those elements? I mean, are those challenged by anything? Because I.
It's more technical.
Normally, that's a formality that happens once the township and the city.
Yeah, it's a mapping situations. It's a technicality to figure out if, if it would, if it works right for the properties involved.
And is there an agreement?
Right.
There were some other commentary about the water management. When, when those were annexed many years ago, as well as what we currently have now, and I know even in the property that I live in, that there were some water issues when they, I don't know what they uncovered. Did we have water management in regards to subdivisions? And when did that start? When we're talking about, we build a subdivision, we have to have retention ponds, we have to have a bunch of, I would say, guidance that either the city or the, I'm sorry, the state or the DNR put together to ensure that it does not address or impact the concerns?
I'd say roughly around 2000, 2005 is when that started kicking in, where all subdivisions, all new developments had to deal with stormwater.
Got it.
Is that it? Alder Person Kohler.
Just real last, this last comment that I would have is, we sat here over a year ago talking about next-gen housing and the need for housing. And, you know, obviously, we're, we're looking at what's the best for the city, not what, you know, how, how do we want to grow and how do we want, as a team, as a group? I know it was split. I know we had a lot of different decisions. And since that, you know, and I know the papers, I don't know if Joe's here or not, he usually gets me quoted pretty well. I was, I was the lead of, of not doing that development. It wasn't that I was against development. I was against a development that we were, we were kind of trying to push through, where this one is not being pushed through. This one started, you guys talked about four years ago being annexed in the city. This property, who the owners had been ideas to build on that property for at least 20 years prior to even getting annexed in. I know that as a, as a personal note. I also know that after the next-gen housing last year and a half, or at least the last year, myself and also Alderman Churchie have sat in with the city, in with the HDAC, and looking at what is available out there for development, and where do the developers want to develop? Fortunately, this property is, is, is a great location. It's a great location to build single-family homes, maybe a couple duplexes, so on and so forth, but not, but not your next-generation homes, not your, your, your small type houses. So, you know, there's other areas. And I tell you right now, council, no matter where we decide, and we know where the next builder's going to be, we're going to have a whole nother room of people complaining and people asking as we continue to grow. So I, I do understand, I do get it. The United States is short in housing. They need to build housing, and all we're trying to do is make this housing somewhat affordable. We're not making it government subsidized or anything else like that. We're making, trying to help make it somewhat affordable and attractive so that we can grow. The city has a lot to offer. If you look around the city, between the shower center, the, the car museum, you got Pike Lake, the hike out there, you got a bunch of things going on in the city. And I have people coming in from other, as a businessman, I have people coming in, we're meeting at the Perk Place, and they're saying, "This is a best-kept secret." And some of these guys are living over there in Cedarburg and, and Cedar, Cedarburg and Grafton, and saying, "What's, we didn't even know Hartford existed. We didn't know this town is so, so great." So again, I'm just saying this, that we're, we're trying to, we're trying to help those who are interested in, in, in what we're looking for, and that is definitely housing. And you're right, there was a comment made. It's been, I've been on the council well over 10 years, and we haven't put in a subdivision since, and that's pathetic in the side. So that, and that's my, that's my opinion. We do need to grow, but we have to grow correctly. We have to grow smartly, and I believe this is all part of, part of the plan.
One other thing, I, I think, well, first thing, like, again, what's before us is not any new development, right? This is just a right-of-way agreement. We're not, any other development will come before us in some other meeting sometime in the future, may or may not happen. First, first point. Second, I just want everyone that's here to understand, like, at least personally, I hear you, I understand your concerns, and we don't make light of them. And I don't like hearing about anybody's property being impacted, and I don't think it's growth at all costs, like, we do take your considerations into account. I also, there was a comment made about individuals in the town being a second-class citizen or being treated like that, and I'm sorry if that's the way that you feel. It certainly, I haven't been on the council as long, but I, I hope that's not how you feel in the future. I also think, at least from my perspective, we're looking at a very narrow issue in front of us, which is this right-of-way, and there are other, other issues that need to be dealt with. My understanding is the city has tried to work very hard to address the concerns in the, within the confines and legal confines that they've tried to work on them. So I just want to let you know that we hear you and understand your concerns. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Alder Person Phillip.
I'll just add, well said. I just want to make sure, John, we understand if and when this moves forward. I actually have concerns about the water comments and things like that, to ensure that this study is quite thorough and that we understand any impact that we have, not only within the space, but any of the residents. And be real curious to see the concerns from, from Mr. Eli as to what he was talking about. Thank you.
And, and I would encourage him to contact me, John Griffin, City Engineer, on the website. I would be happy to look into it. Very, it's something that would concern me as well.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you. Did you have something?
Yeah, I think we need to assure everybody, this is just a preliminary step. Steve, there is no developer anxious to start building homes tomorrow out there, right? This could set idle for one year, two years, four years. We don't know.
Yeah, that's correct. We are preparing for future development, but again, there is nobody in line.
Sure. We're just looking to the future on this.
With that, if discussion by council is complete, I'll call this meeting closed and ask for possible action on Resolution Number 3655, Resolution to enter a jurisdictional transfer agreement with the town of Hartford for a portion of the North Main Street right-of-way from the north city limit to the proposed Neville Farm residential development.
A motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Alder Person Kohler, second by Alder Person Churchie.
Motion by Alder Person Kohler.
Seconded by Alder Person Churchie for the adoption of proposed Resolution Number 3655.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have Item 10D, which is Police and Fire Commission, appointment by Anthony Burgard as Assistant Fire Chief by Police and Fire Commissioner Dean Curley. I'd invite everybody to stay. This is going to be your new fire chief, and we have the contract with the town of Hartford. So if you'd like to see who your new fire chief is, this would be a great time to stay there and support that. Or not.
Good evening. President of the Police and Fire Commission was not able to be here this evening, so I'm filling in for him. The Police and Fire Commission would like to, first of all, congratulate Chief Paul Stevens on an outstanding career of service to the city of Hartford and our surrounding communities. Thanks, Paul, for a job well done. On behalf of Rich Fair, Chris Ranky, Joe Dodderman, and myself, we would like to thank Steve Volker and his administrative staff, Assistant Chief Craig Desemler, and Karen Bialis, who is the Director of Nursing for Aurora Medical Center of Hartford, for their assistance throughout the entire hiring process. With that said, we are proud to introduce to you the next Chief of Hartford Fire and Rescue, Mr. Anthony Burgard. Tony.
Congratulations. Welcome. Will you read again?
Thank you. Thank you.
As a little bit of a side, Chief Stevens, sincere congratulations to you, too. I understand that this is your 28th anniversary today, and the, the, heading out our EMTs, our paramedics, our fire department, so, and again, an incredibly appreciative community thanks you, and we're glad that you're putting this retirement off until 2025.
I think what you meant to say was Chief McFarland's 28th anniversary is today.
Oh, Chief McFarland. Oh, okay. Well, see, yeah, wrong chief.
They all look alike. You never know.
Yeah, well. The president can do it, so can I. Okay. Yes, Chief McFarland. Sorry. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Well, they, they both look so much alike. Well, we stepped on that one. Okay.
We actually have a motion on this now?
Yes, okay. We go with that. The resolutions and possible action, Resolution Number 3662, Item Number 11A, Resolution to award the construction contract for the Lakeview Acres Sidewalk Program.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Let's go back to D. We will need to vote on an appointment of Anthony Burgard as the Assistant Fire Chief.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the appointment of the Assistant Chief, second by Alder Person Resniak.
Phillip, it was? Was Phillip the first one to make the motion?
Yes, he was.
Motion by Alder Person Phillip, seconded by Alder Person Resniak, approving the appointment of Anthony Burgard as Assistant Fire Chief.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you very much for that. Now, we are on to 11 resolutions and possible actions. A resolution to award the construction contract for the Lakeview Acres Sidewalk Program. And who will be taking that? John?
That'll be mine.
John, thank you.
That'll be mine, yes. Just, I don't have my executive summary in front of me, but this is our project that has been punted for two years now. Due to, there was some litigation when I first got here, that was resolved, and then we went through a new design process. Thank you. And we had a lot of interest. The low bid was always construction, and they're doing, they're ready to go here as soon as the weather breaks, the frost is out of the ground. And part of this is going to be funded through special assessments, and the balance is part of our sidewalk program for the year.
John, have we used Alway before?
They have been a sub, they were a subcontractor on the South Main Street project for restoration work. So that is my experience with them.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Alder Person Webb.
Do we expect any other litigation on this front?
No, I, I've spent a lot of time with the residents. I, I think we'll, we'll have some bumps and lumps, but it should go pretty well.
They won't invite us to their backyard barbecues, we know that.
Ah, yes. Okay. Okay. Any discussion? Would look for a motion on resolution 3662. Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Kohler.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Kohler for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3662.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. 11B, resolution, uh, that was 3662. This is 3665, resolution to award a public construction contract for the reconstruction of West Rossman Street and utilities in 2024. John?
Thank you. Uh, good news is that we had, uh, 10 bidders on this project. Uh, the pricing came in excellent. We were able to reduce the borrowing for the year or for the biennium as a result. And, uh, we're recommending that we proceed with under construction Iron Ridge. Uh, for the base bid project, there was an alternate which included the replacement of 14 water services on Center Street. But after further review, that's, there's some bad sewer on that street too. So we will wait and do that as a separate project later.
Okay. Okay, uh, any questions for staff?
I do.
Please, go ahead.
You're waiting on, on a piece, are we going to dig up the ground again in that road or, or not? You, you said you're waiting on, I missed your comment, I'm sorry.
The comment was on the alternate bid item was for the 14 water services. And because we have sewer issue out there that we learned about as we were getting ready to award the project, we decided to wait.
Before you awarded?
Before we awarded.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you were waiting on the water services, meaning we'll have to carve up again. Sorry, thank you. Nothing, Mayor.
Good. Yes, Alderperson Turchi.
Motion to approve.
Looking for a motion to approve. Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Garza.
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Garza for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3665.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. We go to 11C, resolution 3666. Wonderful. Resolution authorizing staff to enter an agreement with MSA Professional Services for North Main Street Design Services. John?
This is the design study that would accompany this, uh, North Main, Main Street right of way acquisition to identify, do we need more right of way? Do we, uh, uh, you know, what is it going to cost to run our water and sewer out there? How do we want it done so that when a developer comes in and says, we want to develop the Neville property, we say, this is, this is what we've decided we want to get there. So that they don't offer us something less and we haven't thought it through. That's, this is what this is for.
One of the things it also looks at too is the traffic, traffic, traffic safety concerns that some of the town residents have brought up during this back and forth, back and forth of what they're looking for. And so this, that is addressed also in this.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Alderperson Fuller.
So we talked about water concerns. Does this study include that as well as far as whether it's going to impact the easement or anything?
I will try and find a way to contact, uh, Mr. Eli because I, I'd like to find out more about it to see if there's something there. If there is, this would be the perfect time to look at it.
Yeah, cause if you're, do we have to widen the street or put in some wa, yeah, okay. Thanks.
The interesting point to that is the closest subdivision that would be adding to the water problem would be Pheasant Run.
I, I just wanted to understand it, right? I mean, he's got a valid concern and I think he brought up some points.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I'm just wondering if we're going to do a study, can we include it in this one? That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
I would do that, yes.
Thank you very much. Would look for action. Go ahead. Yo.
Since the agreements aren't finished yet, is this premature? Or is it just part, right?
I, I, I don't think it's necessarily premature. There's, there's.
You gotta do it sometime.
You know, I guess we could wait to release the contract till after the town board approves because then it's finished. And I could do that.
Yeah, for MSA, I would, I, we'd wait until after the, all the contracts are signed and ready to go with, and approved by the DOT.
Right, so I, yeah. So I'll make a motion with that amendment that the release of this would be after DOT approval.
I'll second that.
Right, is that, that's the final step?
Town approval, I would say. DOT is a matter of just checking to make sure we have an agreement and.
Town and DOT approval. Okay.
I still second it.
Wait, so was that town and DOT approval or you're saying it just needs to be the town?
I don't know how long we'd have to wait for DOT approval. That's my problem with that.
I get it.
All right, so then I'll retract it and say, once the town and the city agree?
Yes.
Then we can move forward.
And I still second it.
Can we just add that wording in or do you think we should vote separately to add that in?
Uh, the, I would, the, the resolution, uh, actually, as it says, um, resolution authorizing staff to enter into an agreement with MSA Professional Services for North Ma, Design Services doesn't say when it's going to happen.
Okay, so I understand, an understanding.
Yes.
We will, yeah, we can make sure that happens.
Yeah, fair enough.
Thank you very much. Okay, and, uh, are you moving then to approve that?
And I'm seconding it.
Yeah, okay. Still, okay, just, just making sure, seeing he was looking to amend. Okay. With that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item 11D, resolution 3667, a resolution in opposition to Senate Bill 691. I believe this is the one that, uh, Alderperson Reagan spoke about regarding, uh, the communities 5,000 and above would be the ones that would be having that. Of course, we do not have any that are impacting us right now, but in the future that could be because neither Rubicon nor the town of Hartford are even at 4,000. So, uh, but that's what we're looking to do, just to put in our, our rights as they currently exist. So, did you have anything else to say about that?
You're, you're kind of wandering down that road. I was just kind of wondering where we're going to go with it. But anyways, uh, so this is a basically a resolution, uh, in support of the position taken by Mid Moraine, which is what Alderperson Reagan talked about. And that is again, against, in opposition of the Senate Bill 691, again, which allows for urban towns. And again, really the thing that hurts us the most is that, and, and I think the biggest stickler to this pro, to this bill is the fact it would force, uh, communities of our size with townships that exceed 5,000 population, the fact that they would be forced to add utilities and pay for those utilities, um, which would expand the need for additional, um, uh, collection systems and of course, a wastewater treatment plant. So again, our wastewater treatment plant is designed to fit the needs that we have and future expansion. But this would force us and other communities in the state of Wisconsin to expand their treatment plants, their wells and things like that, that provide the water and the sewer treatment plant. So, uh, this is why Mid Moraine is highly against it, as Alderperson Reagan talked about. And again, this is why we're supporting that with an opposition to Senate Bill 691.
Can I?
Please, go ahead. No, Alderperson Webb.
Is there a version of this that we might support if it said the opposite? That if somebody in a town wanted to get onto our sewer or water and they paid for it, like, we would be okay with that? Cause I'm assuming that would supplement like our utility.
We, we already, we already do that and that's one of the big.
But don't they have to annex into the city to get that?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. We have, we have residents in the township that have our sewer. Example is the Pike Lake Sewer District is also the Rubicon Sewer District. Um, and this is a good, I'm glad you brought this up. So we have two agreements, um, with the town of Rubicon and the town of Hartford regarding the sewer districts that are, as you mentioned before. And, and that's one of the things is that because we have a good relationship, believe it or not, with the town of Hartford and the town of Rubicon, um, we, we already have great agreements with them that serve both communities. Um, and so we don't need the state to tell us about how our agreement should be and what they should have in there. Um, so that's why we're, we're absolutely opposed to the concept of forced agreements.
Go ahead, Alder, or President Rosniak.
Who's sponsoring this bill? Who introduced this bill?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's several communities, um, townships that are again, almost equal to their partnering cities or villages, okay? Um, but there's lawsuits throughout the state and there might be one, I don't know, to the east of us, just down the road. And those lawsuits are very expensive, right? No doubt about it. Um, and it's a situation where again, these townships are almost as equal to or larger than the, the community in which they're neighboring. And so, uh, those are the kind of communities who are for this and are asking so that they wouldn't have to have a lawsuit against their neighboring community. This would be forced upon them by the state.
But somebody had to introduce this bill and sponsor this bill that we could send emails in opposition to them.
Look it up.
Yeah, it's Senators Testin, James Quinn, Staffsholt and Vanguard.
It's, that's in there.
Yeah, it's in there.
In their summary? Okay, thank you. We'll get it.
Alderperson Fuller.
Hey, does this have any conflict to our urban planning kind of agreement strategy that we put together within?
No, that's again, another example of how towns and cities and villages can work together. Uh, and by the way, urban planning is a lot of times has to do with, uh, a mandate from the state, federal government, or even in a county level. And so, um, that would have no effect on this.
It wouldn't affect this, what they call extraterritorial zoning or annexation and plat approval or anything like that. It's just specific to the elements that you're talking about with water and sewer.
Um, it could, it could affect regarding extraterritorial zoning, yes. But again, we try to address that with our agreements with the townships. Matter of fact, we're in the process, next week I have a meeting with the town of Aaron in which we have, um, some extraterritorial rights with the town of Aaron.
But, but, but in that case, depending on how they're written, does the state supersede that or does the local agreements that we have for this growth plan that we've had agreements with?
Yeah, there is no, there, the state doesn't have any jurisdiction. It is, I mean, where the state's laws allow us to have that, um, but we can forgate, forgive that or forego that allowance if we have an agreement with the township.
Understood. Okay, so then our agreement would supersede?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, oh, Alderperson Reagan.
Move to approve.
Okay, that's fine. I'll, I'll call for those. Uh, occasionally I'll let Turchi get away with that, but.
Then I'll second.
Okay, we have, yeah, Reagan and Turchi.
Motion by Alderperson Reagan, seconded by Alderperson Turchi for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3667.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. 11E, resolution 3668, resolution approving the city, Hartford City Taxi Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. And we have Randy here to talk to us about this.
Lucky you guys. Um, so currently taxi's going through our tri-annual review. Taxi Superintendent Deb Holton has been, uh, logging some long hours, making sure we're, we're up to par. Um, this is basically just some house cleaning for us. Um, what this is, uh, the, the FTA requires that all agencies that receive federal, federal grant funding for transportation services develop a plan such as this. And, uh, we actually had this updated of August of '22. Um, but the, everything is due at the end of this month on the 29th. So we're bringing it in front of this body to officially get, uh, approved.
Thank you very much. I'm sure everybody read through completely, so, uh, there's a complete understanding and would look for, uh, a motion on action of this. So Alderperson Carroll, seconded by Alderperson Savage.
Motion by Alderperson Carroll, seconded by Alderperson Savage for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3668.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We go to ordinances. This is a first reading for ordinance 1481, an ordinance attaching territory to the city of Hartford, Wisconsin, 6967 Lark Avenue. Tax key number T6-0794-017, uh, 6971 Lark Avenue, tax key number T6-0794-018. And I'm guessing that our city planner, uh, Jacob is going to take this, yes?
Correct. So we have this 2018 agreement with the town of Hartford for when we put sewer, sanitary sewer in Lark Avenue. And whenever the septic fails on those properties, they then have to attach into the city of Hartford. Uh, these two properties had failed septic, so they're attaching. Uh, this has appeared before you two times before. Uh, we've had some issues with the DOA on the language in the ordinances. Uh, so this is here for the third time. Uh, we have their blessing, so, uh, just looking for a vote on this.
Well, third time's a charm. Good. Uh, well, uh, would we look to suspend the rules to move in the, to suspend Alderperson Kohler and President Rosniak?
Motion by Alderperson Kohler, seconded by Alderperson Rosniak to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance number 1481.
For suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, for action, pass, uh, the attaching of the territory of those two addresses. Alderperson Carroll, seconded by Alderperson Garza.
Motion by Alderperson Carroll, seconded by Alderperson Garza for the adoption of proposed ordinance number 1481.
Did you have a question? Yes, please, go ahead.
With these two, how many have hooked on to our city sewer in Hillcrest Estates?
That I can't speak to.
Um, I believe it was four or five. I believe it was 10.
Yeah.
I know that Alderperson Fuller had asked me the same question six months ago and I told him, I told him back then, but I can't remember what the, I believe the answer was 10.
That's a good answer.
Would you, would you agree to that?
I think my question was a little different. My question was, did the finances come out to what we projected?
Oh, yeah.
That, that, that was the Fuller question.
It was close.
I'm not the only one.
And the answer was 10.
The answer was 10, yeah.
That's exactly what I got. Thanks.
Well done, Steve.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to move on.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion second. There are no second readings at this time. We go to the city administrator's report. He's got three points. We hand it over to our city administrator, Steve Volker.
All right, the first item on the agenda under A is the city of Hartford new housing fee report under Wisconsin statutes 66.10014. You've all received the executive summary, so I don't have to go through it, but Jacob is here to talk more about the concept.
All right, uh, this came under Act 243 in 2017. Uh, it's kind of a mandate from the state to go through all our, uh, new housing fees for permits, uh, any type of fee that we charge to a developer during the process. Uh, and then put it in a format that the state wants us to put it in. And then we put it on our website and then it's available for not only city, city residents, but developers. And this does become quite helpful when a developer comes into community. You can just plop that in front of them and say, these are what our fees are. It's right there in front of them, uh, so there can't be, there's nothing coming at them out of the blue so that you know what's coming at them. And it's, it's helpful in, in that way.
And this is already addressed by the, by the plan commission?
Correct. This went last night before the plan commission. By the state statute, it has to go to each member of the governing body. And then that, if it's, once it's posted, we can then make sure we can charge those fees that are in that report.
Just so you understand, this is not an action item. It's for your information. So if you ever get, you know, questioned by the state, did you get told about this report? You could say, yes, I was.
Okay.
Because that happens all the time.
Or two words, blame Steve.
Yeah, I'll deny it.
Tell what you're talking about.
You're on video.
Item Number B is a recommendation to approve the Hartford City Taxi Preventive Maintenance Policy.
I'm here.
And back in the hot seat?
So, this is piggybacking off of my previous, again, our preventive maintenance policy. We did do some updates in January. Deb Holton had done that, and again, this is part of our tri-annual review.
This is an action item?
Yep.
Any questions? If not, Mayor?
Thank you. Would look to approve our City Taxi Preventive Maintenance Policy. Alder Person Webb and Alder Person Savage.
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Savage, approving the Hartford City Taxi Preventative Maintenance Policy.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Steve?
Item Number C, a recommendation to approve the agreement of building inspection services with the city of West Bend. Jacob is here to talk more about it, but I will just start off by saying, we have basically the need for about 45 to 55 hours a week for building inspection to keep up with all the building permits. And anyways, when we had previous agreement with a private contractor, again, they were able to provide that level. Then we changed to having an in-house individual, which, again, was able to provide it for a lesser cost to us, but one of the part-timers that we had for roughly eight to 10 hours a week, we hit, as the mayor called it, the catastrophic year of 2020 with COVID, and he was no longer willing to go into homes. I couldn't believe why. So, anyways, he left. We were not able to, and you've probably seen the ad on the website, that we've always been looking for, a part-time build, a maintenance, a part-time building inspector. So, we, again, continue to have this issue of not being able to find somebody, and so we reached out, because we're all about working with other communities, we've reached out on a temporary solution with the city of West Bend, and asked them if they would be able to have one of their inspectors come over and work with us for, again, that eight to 10 hours a week, on average, it's 10 hours average. We have put together a agreement. This agreement, again, will go into place probably March 1st, and why I say March 1st is because when we first need them, right now, our building inspector is able to, because it's the winter season, to maintain what we have right now, but when we start getting busy again, we will need assistance with that. I'd also like to let you know that, again, this is a solution that we're currently having of, as a temporary solution, we hope that it, it doesn't become a permanent solution, but the fact is, is that we will be able to also look at a permit, more permanent solution with the Village of Jackson, who is in need of a 20-hour-a-week individual, and so next meeting, you'll hear about a agreement with the, with the Village of Jackson. If through that agreement with the Village of Jackson, we're able to hire someone permanently, 20 hours with them, 10 hours with us, then we would drop the agreement with the city of West Bend, and they are well aware of that situation.
So, these are truly win-win situations for both communities and the taxpayers of both communities.
Absolutely, and the sharing of building inspection is really not something that's brand-new. A lot of the other neighboring communities have done this, either like one employee, two full-time employees, they're shared three communities. One example was the Village of Slinger, along with the Village of Richfield, and Sussex were all in an agreement with two full-time employees. So, this is much like that situation, which either we're going to be going with West Bend on eight to 10 hours a week average, or if we can find somebody that will take the, the 30-hour, we'll say a 30-hour-a-week job with Jackson, we will be combining with them. So, yes, it's a win-win-win situation. Any questions? Thanks, Jacob, for all your insight in that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions regarding that? If not, Mayor?
Thank you. For Item 13C, Recommendation to Approve the Agreement of Building Inspection Services with the city of West Bend, we have Alder Person Savage, seconded by Alder Person Phillip.
Motion by Alder Person Savage, seconded by Alder Person Phillip, approving the agreement for building inspection services with the city of West Bend.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.